Welcome to the board meeting. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we take roll call, please?
Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Tietzler?
Mr. Detzl?
Here.
Mr. Heether?
Here.
Mrs. Taubey?
We always like to readdress our mission statement each meeting. So just as a reminder, Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a path to success. And then we have a new agenda item. At the beginning of each meeting, we will approve the agenda for the evening. So the board president recommends to adopt the agenda as presented this evening. I need a second.
Summate.
Need one more?
Summate.
That passes four to zero. Okay. Brings us to 5.1, Student Achievement Liaison Report.
Tonight, we have Judy Gallardi and Kayla Holzinger from the high schools that are going to speak to us and introduce some students that participated in our AP summer classes.
Thank you for having us. We really appreciate it, and we also appreciate all the support that you all have given us throughout the years. This, I believe, was the fourth year that we've done the AP enrichment camp over the summer, and the purpose of it is to help transition our freshmen that are going into our AP and honors classes and giving them some of the skills that they need to be successful in that. The kind of the design of the program is they come in, we present a project for them, so it's project-based, they go through a series of things such as picking a topic, researching the topic, and then they come up with a presentation of the information and the ideas that they researched and came up with. And really, the idea of it is to help further their collaborative skills, which lends itself to a lot of creative thinking and communication amongst each other and a lot of critical thinking along the way, and that's what we are trying to foster in the program.
This was my second year doing the enrichment camp. My first year, it was entirely virtual, and I cannot explain how big the difference was from virtual to in-person and having the kids come into the building and do this project, which was really, really awesome. I did all four sessions over the summer, and each session, there were such unique ideas. They got to go through this whole brainstorming process and come up with a presentation on any topic they wanted to choose, and then go through the research and make any product that they wanted about this. We saw newspapers, we saw a live newscast, we saw podcasts, posters, PSAs, we saw topics that were really serious, and we saw topics that were fun and lighthearted, like pets. So it was really nice to see the kids just get full control over what they wanted to present on and what they were passionate about, what they thought affected them. It was also really great to get to work with the kids more up close and personal. We had like four hours a day, four hours a day for five days, and in that time, we would do many lessons for the first half of the day. So how do you take notes? How do you do research? How do you create a work cited? In the second half of that day, they would have time to work, and during that time, you would get to go and talk to each group. And it was really nice to see the Northwest and the Colrain kids work together. It was overall a really positive experience. So I will turn it over to these guys.
Yeah, so I was in charge of doing the post-processing for our project. We made a podcast, so I was in charge of managing the audio, getting the video crop, doing the green screen, just making it a finished, final project.
Hi, I'm Azariah, and I was part of the podcast.
Yeah, I would tell you your experience.
Oh, it was fun working together with my group, putting it all together in a podcast, finding evidence, and making it all come together.
Hi, I'm Zach. I was the one who was in charge of brainstorming most of our ideas and also doing our introduction and conclusion. I felt like that our topic on financial literacy was a very good one that we had chose because we all agreed that financial literacy is such an important topic that teens need to know about. And luckily, our school district does have a required credit for financial literacy that has started this year after July 1st, 2022. So it kind of did really correlate all together, and it worked very together, and I have to have a very good time working with my group.
And they chose their topic on financial literacy before they knew about the credit. So I thought that was really what they thought was important, and it was also happening at the same time. I thought that was pretty awesome.
In terms of my personal experience with it, I've never really worked on such like a large and polished project for a school, like, thing. And so like, being, like, working so much and making such a polished finished product that I'm actually happy with, and that feels like I would have done even if it wasn't in a school, felt pretty good. I do feel like towards the end of some of the days, it dragged on because we didn't have all of our equipment, but other than that, it was pretty good.
We actually, the presentation, this is our final project.
Three, two, one, and go. All right, welcome to the first and only episode of this podcast. I am your host, Michael, and today I'm joined by my co-host.
I'm Zach.
And two guests.
Hi, I'm Malia. I'm a freshman at Northwest High School.
Hi, I'm Azariah, freshman going to Northwest High School.
Today's topic, should parents and schools teach students to be financially literate going into adulthood?
Yes, I would say yes.
All right. What, starting off, what is financial literacy?
Financial literacy is the ability to understand and effectively use various financial skills, like including personal financial management, budgeting, investing. Financial literacy is the foundation of your or your teen's relationship with money and how its long life journey before you.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I agree with that.
As well. So, nice field on financial literacy. Why should teens gain knowledge about personal finance?
Well, currently, there just needs to be a push in order to get more young adults to be financially independent. According to a study done by Pew Research, around 64% of adults say that children, or that young adults should be financially independent by the age of 22. However, only 24% of young adults at the age of 22 are financially independent from their parents. Meaning that we need to have a larger push in order to get children to understand finance and be able to become independent from their parents and be responsible with their own money.
Yeah, I think financial literacy is important because it teaches you financial skills
like budgeting, investing, managing, and paying off debt, and how to keep track of your money.
Definitely, because financial independence, stability is going to be very important in the long run. So, what basics about finance should teens know about?
So, since teenagers are beginning their life, their journey into life, and they're going independent on their own into college and stuff, teenagers should know about the difference between credit. Debit, credit is a loan, you are borrowing money, it's not necessarily your own, but debit is your own money, and you're just taking out money. And you also need to know, you also need to know how to handle your money, how to save and spend it, like, put it away in a bank account, and how, learn how that will be very helpful. And you can also learn about long-term financial planning to help you with the future and not just stay stuck in one place. Um, I also, I have a book, and this is, was edited by Karen Bell Nor, I don't know if you heard it. It is basically a whole book about debit information for kids and teens, tips for successful financial life, and it's very helpful. It was found in Northwest High School, so if you see, it's helping teens if they want to read about it. But yeah, that's.
I found a statement from a source stating that one in four high school students in 2020 now have guaranteed access to personal finance courses. That means 22.7% of students are getting the education they need to be financially capable of. So that's about eight states who offer students courses on financial literacy.
Here in Ohio, we do, there's a requirement that students must take a course in financial literacy in order to graduate. And looking at the 2018 survey of the states, it says that 25 states require students to take a course in economics, not necessarily financial literacy, but at the very least economics, and 23 states require students to take a course in personal finance to graduate, which is, I believe, about 13 states from the, about 1950, which is showing a push to more financial, to make students more financially literate. But it, there needs to be more of a push in order to get like some sort of federal law passed, in order to mandate it across the country, so that way, all students will be able to manage their money properly.
Speaking of schools requiring a finance class versus students to take, there are inclusive sources that students can utilize, especially here at Northwest High School and within the Northwest Local School District. Like, for example, here at Northwest High School and over at Colrain High School, we have a thing called Nice Credit Union and Cardinal Credit Union that we can utilize. So we got, we can obtain our own credit card, I mean, well, no, we can obtain our own debit card, and we can use that to manage our money, and we have our own bank account here. Nonprofit and student organizations such as BPA, MCCLA, DECA, et cetera, offers financial literacy that kids, that teens can participate in for them to gain knowledge about finance. And also, for teens, we have a good opportunity called Dual Credit, which we can take a course under a college or even at the high school, and we can gain credit for financial literacy and get credit for it.
That's very helpful.
Yeah. In terms, we focus a lot on the schools, but the question included parents. And according to a study done by CNBC, about 88% of adults support requiring personal finance education in high school. However, do you think that these teens, that the parents should also teach their students finance, or should it be entirely on the schools?
I feel like some parents aren't going to be able to be there for the child. So I feel like school would be there if they don't know how to do it, and if they do already from their parents, then they should get that extra support.
I do agree with that, because some, some were never, like, parents, some never were taught how to use financial, or they were never taught how to do it, or they don't know anything about it, or can't really teach some kid because, you know, they have to get problems themselves.
And going along with the question also, I feel like that if parents does have the knowledge to, I feel like, I feel like if parents does have the knowledge about finance, then they should definitely utilize that knowledge and teach their kids. So when they get older, when they get their age, or just becoming adults, or in the long run in general, or even starting out, they can learn how to be financially independent, and they can learn how to be financially stable with their money, and also just have a lot in the bank, and so it can just help them out when they get older.
Right.
So that's about all we have to talk about. So to put a nice little bow tie on this, yes, schools and parents should be helping students become financially independent in order to make sure that students manage money, be able to pay off debt, especially if they go to college with student debt. And it's just a skill that's required in life. Is there anything you all would like to add?
Definitely. What I would like to add is, me being the teenager that I am, me personally, I love money. I love to spend money, I love to gain money. I do love money because, you know, it provides me with most of the things that I want. But, you know, me being a teenager, of course, I'm going to be spending my money on ones and things like that that I obtain, so I don't want to just, you know, be, be used to or get used to just using my money for unnecessary things, because I really want to learn how to manage it for when I get older and become an adult, and I do have to deal with things like, you know, banks, financial aid for colleges, you know, getting a house, getting a credit card, debit card, having a good job, and things like that. So I feel like that learning about financial literacy, especially starting at an age where I am a teenager, would be very beneficial.
Right.
And I would love that.
See, anything else you could ask for?
I would say I have a personal advantage because my dad is talking with my, me and my siblings into like, getting bank accounts and stuff, so I feel like that has helped me like, know or take a knowledge of how useful money can be and how, like, important it is, like, you can't just go wasting it, spending it, especially like you said, that teens are drawn to things that entertain them, and things like that. So I feel like everybody should need to know that, and having that in schools and from the parents or from the school district is very important.
Yeah, I see. All right. I have to go, Azariah.
You agree?
Yeah.
So, that's pretty much all that we have for this podcast today. Thank you so much, guys, for listening to our podcast. Hopefully, you guys agree that financial literacy is an important topic for kids to learn about and gain knowledge about, and we will see you guys later. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Bye.
Thank you.
Guys, look off, we're talking for one, two.
Thank you so much for watching our podcast. Like I said, we really did have a good time doing it. Is there any questions or comments that anybody wants to ask?
What were some of the other choices that you guys threw out besides doing a podcast, or how'd you come to that?
I think that we were originally planning on doing a newspaper, but that was a bit saturated, so we wanted to do something more original.
And I personally feel like that we barely express ourselves, like, through voice when we're speaking, so we felt that doing a podcast was probably the best option, so we can get the most out of what we was going to do.
Yeah, great job.
How do you like the course? I'm excited about your new research. Thank you so much for being here.
Great job.
And Judy and Kayla, thank you, because without the two of you supporting the students, they wouldn't be able to do what they did, so thank you.
Absolutely.
If I was to make a experience, if I was to be in the picture too. Yeah, this is the fourth year I've done it, and every year, we're just amazed at what we can do.
So I have a question for you, ma'am. So, everybody was ninth grade, coming into ninth grade, correct?
Right.
A few months ago, we had, I think it was PRM, had some AP students that were taking...
CCB.
I'm sorry, CCP.
Right.
Can somebody younger than ninth grade participate in that?
This is really a program that bridges the middle school to high school, so that they teach them, like, you saw at the end, the students had all their sources correctly cited, so it's really preparing them to go into high school for that level of rigor with the AP courses that they might go into. So we've really targeted the incoming ninth graders to make sure that, right before they jump into some of those environments, they have the additional skills from experienced teachers like Judy.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And then Butler Tech was not able to make it tonight due to some last-minute conflicts they had with the kids that were going to present, so they will be here at the next meeting with the same presentation.
Okay. Hey, that brings us to legislative update. Chris?
Okay. Thank you. A big thing going on was the $100 million from House Bill 687 that Governor Dewine and the Ohio Legislature have approved and dispersed, about $47 million for safety. It's strictly safety. This is, you can't use it to put a new roof on the high school or build a new storage shed. Unfortunately, we didn't get any money. Still not certain why. For example, Cincinnati got $993,000, Lakota $950,000, Fairfield $350,000, Marymont $150,000, Oak Hills $250,000, NCH $116,000, Fintetown $50,000, Mount Helfie $100,000. I did talk to some of the people, and they were unclear, were waiting to find out exactly why, but the good news is, we can reapply, and I think you said, Chris, the deadline is October the 3rd.
Correct.
And with that, there's still $53 million left, and you said now they're giving even more money out, $100,000 per building versus 50. I didn't see anything about $100,000 in there.
Yeah, it's the original cap at $100,000. The first round, they limited a lot of it to $50,000.
Okay.
So that's where they're coming up with the additional $53 million to round out the total.
Well, we'll take it. The one thing that I thought just struck me is why we didn't get any, but the Hamilton County Education Center, God bless them, they got $50,000, and there's no students there. But bottom line is, let's see if we can get it this time, and with that, we can increase safety, and you can pretty much use it for anything. So we'll see what happens, and that's it for my update.
Mark, thank you.
And they did say in their, that school districts that were not funded in round one would be given priority in round two, so hopefully with that, and I did find that there were three districts in Hamilton County that were not funded in the first round. So we were one of three, and we will reapply, and hopefully, with us being not funded in that round, priority in this round that we will get it.
Yeah, then their liaison man needs to just fax straightened out. But anyway, if we can reapply, better late than never.
And we have no idea why we were passed by first round.
I've got a question in to the, his boss to find out, and so when I find out, I'll let you guys know, if I find out, no, no.
Sure.
State Bureau of Commerce, it might be a while, but at least he called me back today.
Okay. Yeah, that was good.
Yeah.
Great, thank you, sir. Butler Tech?
I see that Pete is here tonight. Pete, can you give us a quick update on the Natural Science Center? And I haven't asked him to do this, I just saw he was here, so.
It's Pete.
You know, since Pete's in charge of building the whole building, I figured he would just...
No, actually, it's going really well. We're shooting for, trying to open it up in October. You know, it originally was like, I don't know, 15,000 square foot or 10,000 square feet, and we're up to 25,000 by the time we got done with design. Nothing we're not, not familiar with here. But we're dealing with what everybody else is dealing with, a lot of material shortages, so we're solving problems one day at a time, but it's been an exciting project, and hopefully you guys can get up there when we open it up and toward a project, toward a facility.
Yeah, that's why we want to try and have a board meeting up there, and that would be nice.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Once it's opened up to have it there at the facility.
Yeah, it's the first job I've built with horses, goats, and pigs, so, anyway, looking forward to it.
Thanks, Pete.
Thanks, Pete. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any reports from any employee-related organizations?
Not tonight.
Okay. And that brings us to community comments. We have one submitted this evening. Just to recap our policy, the Northwest Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to listen to Northwest Local School District residents' comments, suggestions, and concerns on educational issues. It is important to remember that the board conducts the meetings in public, but the meetings are not a public forum. The intent of the meeting is to allow the board to complete needed business. Northwest Board of Education meetings are conducted using Robert's Rules of Order. Most matters which fall under the jurisdiction of the board may be addressed during the community comments section of the order of business. The board will not discuss negotiations and personnel in open session. Any concerns and comments about individuals ought to be brought to the attention of administration. A school district cannot discuss personal student information, whether or not discipline was imposed on a student, nor the reason for that decision, because disclosure would be in violation of state and federal law. Just a few guidelines for public commentary. Individuals wishing to address the board must complete and submit a request to speak. Individuals will preface their comments by announcement of their name, address any group affiliation, if that is applicable. Each person will be given three minutes to speak on an agenda item of any topic during community comment. Public commentary is confined to that portion of the agenda. Individuals will be recognized to speak once on a given topic. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may individually address, question, board members, district administration, or members of the public in attendance. No response to the speaker will occur from board members, district administration, or members of the public in attendance. And no more than 15 minutes will be devoted for public participation. Repetitive statements will be ruled out of order by the presiding officer, and the presiding officer has the right to terminate the participation of any individual or individuals if the person violates the rules of court order. So tonight, we have a request to speak by Diane Bradley.
Good evening. Before I actually get into my statement there, I, I need to address some disparaging comments that were directed towards me at the last board meeting, and those consisted of, speaking of my, my, my choice not to stand for the pledge of allegiance, I made this statement when I was a board member, all my reasoning for that. As a, you know, United States citizen, we have the right to practice religion, and we also have the right not to practice religion. So my choice is not to practice or affiliate myself with any form of religion, and because the pledge does consist of a religious figure in it, I choose not to partake in it. So I don't appreciate the disparaging comments about my reasoning for not standing for the pledge of allegiance when it actually is my right not to practice a religion. There also was a comment in regards to the amount of donations that an individual contributed to the school district, and what I want to point out is that merely based on the parents that you were born and the gender you were born, education and experience the same, and certain individuals make one, for every dollar one individual makes, myself, based on the parents that I was born and the gender that I was born, I would make 63 cents to that same dollar. So to tout and boast that you have additional disposable income to contribute to the school district doesn't land very well on someone like myself where, where education experience the same, receiving 63 cents for the dollar. But outside of that, the comment that I, yes, it was a fact that I did run for the school, the Board of Education, and I did lose. I was appointed, so I did have an opportunity to sit at the, at the board, but what I want to point out is that no one who looked like me has ever been elected to this Board of Education, to my knowledge. So the fact that I was trying to make history, I do not appreciate having the derogatory statements about my attempt to make history as being something that should be looked down upon, on me actually trying something. Aside from all that, the one, if there's any comments made on what I just made, I really would request additional information on a statement that was made at the last board meeting, and that statement went to the, to the gist of, there are 135,000 schools in the United States, and 14 of them were a part of a mass shooting. If we can expound on what the intent of that statement was actually really trying, the point is trying to drive home with that statistic. So with the, and I said, I was really doing my disparaging comments because there wasn't a way to go through it, but the reason why I'm really up here as far as community comments is part two of what I came up here last time about protocol. I was asking the board, that's my understanding that we went outside of protocol and did not follow policies and procedures on a modification of a building, and I was asking merely, are we as a community to understand that that is allowable because if you're an alumni of the school district, or is that allowable because you are a Board of Education member, or is it allowable if you have great intent? And this is just policies and procedures as a whole, that we don't have to abide by policies and procedures if I have good intent. The last thing I, just came to my knowledge after the board meeting, that the area of the building that was modified was the men's section of the building, and so the further question is, if we are addressing or modifying a men's portion of the building, do we not have to follow policies and procedures, and would that get approval from the board? Or is it that if you're women, you have to follow policies and procedures? Those are my comments.
Mark, up for the record, because I served with her, Ms. Bradley, there was a lady by the name of Susan Mosley Howard, who I served with for, Tim, how long was she on the board?
She was on there for five years.
She elected how many times?
She was appointed for a year, and then she got elected. It's 25, 24, 25 years ago.
Well, I was first elected 20 years ago, so it was after that, but there has been a precedent set, so just for the record, she did serve and was elected. So just for the record, she did serve and was elected. And as far as the female side, I'm sure you would get board approval if you want to go over there and do it. It wasn't nearly as bad, ma'am. I mean, if you look at both, because we thought about doing that one too, but in terms of just grimy grudge, you don't have football players going through that entrance for the last 50 years. And so it really isn't that bad, but it could use some more. So I agree with you, there should be attention paid to it.
Yeah, it's not about the actual situation, it's about protocol when it comes to policies and procedures.
So we weren't aware that that had occurred as a board. So we did, that's why we tabled the approval, so that we could investigate that. We had a conversation with Mr. Heather about, there's a protocol, you have to follow it. And that was clearly discussed and the precedent was set right after that.
So has that been voted on or does that still yet to be voted on?
It gets voted on this evening.
Yeah, so that's also important. When it comes to policies and procedures, are we allowed to step outside of those if we have good intent? Is the question to the board. If our intention is good, we don't have to follow.
No, ma'am. No, that, this is just, it was a one-time thing. We had talked, Matt is here tonight, the same guy was going to help me. We had talked to Darryl and Matt five months ago about painting Story Chad and I said, Matt, do you want us to do that? And he said, oh, we're going to be doing it later. So we didn't do it. And so we were going through it, but this was again, I think the gist of the thing was to surprise people right before the first football game. And you can't, I can't tell you how many people have called and thanked me or emailed me. But again, my pink brush is retired.
No, it's just a precedence.
Yeah.
I don't want to narrow it to, I don't want to keep it just on the modification of a building. It's about policies and procedures. What is acceptable to step outside of policies and procedures? That's what I'm asking the board.
Yeah, any deviation from policy or procedure would have to be approved by the board or the administration first.
First? Okay.
That brings us to approval of superintendent consent items.
All right, so tonight, we'll go through our consent items. We'll start with Susan.
Good evening. So this evening, we have a recommendation, one retirement, nine resignations, 15 initial appointments, 13 change in staffs. Very supplemental items.
Under general business, we have vendor contracts, had one non-public contract, one professional development contract and a few special education services contracts. I'd also like to bring your attention to a resolution to accept bus stops. It's an annual administrative code requirement that we have to do every year.
The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
So moved.
Motion, second. Any discussion? I'm very impressed with the lack of transportation calls. He was knocking.
Yeah, that was me.
Good. I mean, honestly, to be perfectly honest, I thought the new process of getting, you have to apply or, you know, turn in your request to have transportation, I thought it's a different process. This is probably going to be.
A nightmare.
A nightmare, thank you, Jim. But it really, it saved us, I think, when it's all said and done, six routes, we got to reduce six routes, is that correct?
Yes.
Which obviously, when you have a bus driver shortage and diesel fuel at 525 to 550 a gallon, is substantial savings. So greatly appreciate that, Chris. Good job to you and your team.
Our transportation department has done an amazing job of routing. They did have extra support this summer because we did have Bob Engel through July, end of July, with the onboarding of a new software, but they were really on top of all the routes. Again, again, it comes down to with our department, making sure that we have the attendance and we can cover the routes when someone is absent, but our team has done an amazing job.
And so the new software, that's the one that you can track where your child is and all that?
Is that fully implemented now? Is, I mean, I have the app now, but.
It is. I mean, there's still things that we need to work out, but the software seems to be working out very well compared to the class program that we were using.
Awesome. Take a look. Passes four to zero. Thank you. That brings us to fiscal consent items.
Yes, good evening. First, I'd like to ask you to dispense with reading of and approve the August 8 regular meeting minutes. We also have our financial report for the month of July. Our all funds balance was at 59 million and our general unreserved balance was down to 22 million. So that's less than our cash balance reserve requirement. Our revenues for the month of July were 2.8 million or at 3% for our year. Again, we haven't restarted receiving our annual taxes, they come in August and February. And our expenditures were 7 million or at 8% or right on target for our annual monthly expenses. Our weighted investment return was 1.9%. We're just below our benchmarks, but as things are maturing, we're able to invest them at the higher interest rates and take advantage of being able to generate more revenue there. And our list of monthly bills were our routine monthly bills as well as we had our annual property insurance, purchased some Chromebooks, we had the demo at Wygell, staffing and student software as we're gearing up for the year as well as supplies, zero turn rider, the alarm system, some testing and screening assessments, as well as our auxiliary and grant fund payments that we have. And then finally, I'd like to ask the board to approve a records retention disposal form. Normally, we do this every year in January, but with the demo of Wygell, we need space and so we have found some older records that are allowed to be disposed of and so we just want to go through the process and free up some space for that too. So with that, I ask the board to approve the items as listed.
Motion, second. Any discussion or questions?
Amy, what type of records do you guys find that disposable?
A lot of those were older payroll records.
Oh, payroll, okay.
Back in the 1960s.
So it wasn't, it wasn't my report card from 1965?
No, I think that's still on record, but we have to hang on to that as a permanent record.
It had a hammer and a chisel taped to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have some other items for approval. This item is a personnel item and it is the approval of Mark Gilbert as a volunteer at Corrin High School. So with that, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the personnel item as listed.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. That passes three in favor, one abstained for obvious reasons.
Next, we have another personnel item. This one is to hire Chris Heather as a volunteer at Corrin High School and the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the personnel item as listed.
So moved.
He said hire, but it's just.
As volunteer, yes. We still go through our hiring process because we background check our volunteers, but it's as a volunteer.
Passes three in favor, one abstained.
And then lastly, there is a donation that we tabled at the last meeting to actually accept that tonight. And this is the donation for the painting at Corrin High School. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education accept the donation as listed.
So moved.
Any questions or comments, discussion? And again, we did speak with Chris and we also spoke as a board in regards to, there's a policy in place, you have to follow the policy, kind of doesn't matter what your intentions are, for the very obvious reason that if we break that, that sets a precedent. That passes three in favor, one abstained. And that brings us to superintendent update.
All right, so just want to promote two events that are coming up. We did have a hiring fair before school started. We still have some open positions. So there are walk-in hiring events tomorrow from 8:30 to 10:30 in the morning here at our central office. And then Thursday from 1 to 3, again, here at our central office where you don't need an appointment, you can just come in for any of our open positions and interview on the spot, fill out an application while computers set up because everything is done online. But we are still encouraging people who are interested to reach out to our Human Resources Department or just show up on Tuesday morning or Thursday afternoon of this week. We did obviously start school, so last Thursday and Friday, we had staggered starts with our elementaries with half the grade levels, our middle schools with sixth grade and our high schools with ninth grade and then added grade levels on Friday with a full start today. We've had an extremely smooth start. You mentioned transportation, Mr. Gilbert, in addition to just the buildings and the operation. It's been really encouraging to be in the buildings, see the staff and the students back together. It's a joyous occasion to have that start, so we are excited about where we're going this year. Do want to update everyone because I know, even though everybody's back, there's been some news recently about the CDC changes to COVID protocols. So just to reiterate that it is still required that positive cases isolate, but there are no more quarantines for close contacts. So regardless of vaccination status, close contacts are no longer required to quarantine for that. So that means that the mask to stay test to play is no longer in play. We will continue notifying our parents of positive cases, but it'll be on a weekly basis, so they'll get one email at the end of the week if there were cases in their building where they have children. We are still required to monitor outbreaks as it is defined by the Department of Health, so we will continue to do that and notify appropriately. But I wanted people to be aware of just some of those changes and tweaks that the CDC has made that the Ohio Department of Health has also adopted. And then lastly, just want to reiterate, as we start school, there are a lot of after-school events. So a lot of games, a lot of events where we have the public in attendance. And just want to reiterate that our expectations for people in attendance at events is that they follow our rules, that they contribute to a positive culture and climate. We did have some incidents recently at some of our events where that did not happen. And if it is a student, we will discipline accordingly. If someone is involved in behavior that is not sportsmanlike on or off the field, that will also be dealt with. And if it is severe, there are potential charges that will be imposed from the police. So we encourage people to be in attendance and involved, but to do so in an appropriate manner or there will be consequences, including the possibility of being banned from our property. So as we get into the fall season, just want to reiterate those expectations as people begin to congregate in our settings again, because we do have high expectations, not just for our students and our staff, but for our community when they're in our presence.
So obviously, we're speaking to the football game Friday at Colrain. I was there and I watched the whole thing happen and it was shameful. It was absolutely shameful that Erin and her crew have to subject themselves to that and the risk that they take trying to do that. I personally feel like we need to have some type of additional protection in place for these games if this is going to happen, unless we come up with a way that we can keep, the individuals that were arrested that evening were not Colrain or Northwest students. And unless there's a way that we can keep that from happening, you know, I had a conversation with somebody and they said, well, they weren't our students. I'm like, doesn't matter, the ruckus still happened. And I honestly, I worry about, obviously, the people in attendance, but I also worry about our staff, that that could have got significantly worse than what it did. It was literally running around with fire and gasoline and it was just a matter of the two hitting each other and it turned it into a really bad event.
What's the options of having more police officers there? Because there was a comment made, well, they only get paid so much money, so they go somewhere else. We need to be proactive and get more officers there and just so this stuff does not happen.
So we had a full detail that night. We can always.
How many officers?
There were six.
Six.
We can always look to get more. We will do an incident debrief and we will look at what happened and we will, as a team, come up with some strategies moving forward. Obviously, we can never say we're going to present, prevent 100% of everything that's going to happen, but we want to be able to intervene early and make sure that we can mitigate any risk. We will continue to do that because safety and security is the utmost importance. And Erin and her team did an amazing job of pre-planning for that and mitigating the risk as much as possible. We will continue to do incident debrief and come up with new strategies. We will update you as we come up with new ideas. But again, I want to reiterate the expectations that when someone is on our property, whether you are our student or not, whether you are from the community or not, the expectations are the same. And we will hold you to those standards and we will hold you accountable.
But those people that were arrested were not from our community, so.
Not from our school district.
Not from our, I'm sorry, not from our school district. You know, so, you know, what is, what's the option to stop these kids from other school districts coming in here, starting fights and, you know, all hell's breaking.
We will do an incident debrief and come up with some strategies and figure out what logistics we can put in place that would mitigate that. So more to come, know that we are looking into it. We do not want that to be the narrative of what happened. Up until that point, we had, you know, our team on the field, working really hard, doing amazing things. It wasn't the outcome they wanted, but they should have their head held high and they should not be overshadowed by something like that.
I'll tell you, Darryl, if, I mean, in this society, nothing surprises me anymore. I mean, bad things happened years ago. I'm not saying it just started in the last five to 10 years, but I think word needs to get out that if this kind of behavior continues, we'd have no choice but to move Friday night lights to Saturday afternoon headlights. Because I think people, I know how I was as a teenager. I'm not saying I was an angel, but I certainly wasn't the most rowdy kid. And I think night tends to bring out a little more of the rowdiness in a teenager than an afternoon would, so I think word needs to get out that that might be an option that we consider, because we can't take that chance, Mark, of somebody, like you said, with fire and gasoline that close together, just took one spark and bingo, we had, you know, national news. So that would be my opinion.
And I want to acknowledge Erin and Matt and everybody that worked that night. They could not have done a better job, even the whole night, like you were saying. They charge harm's way into taking care and protecting people. They don't even, there's not even a hesitation. And the same goes for Corrin Township Police Department. I watched these defiant kids when they were telling them they could not re-enter past halftime and the belligerence that they spoke to these police officers with and the police officers maintained their very high level of professionalism. I don't know if I could have done that, to be perfectly honest, the things that occurred. So hats off, Erin, to you and your team, Matt. And we've seen that as long as I've ever known this team to be out there taking care of things.
When will a statement be made to the public, social media, about the incident, the facts? I've seen rumors about guns being, you know, drawn or taken away or that it was kids from our schools. When will a statement come out tomorrow about that that can be shared? I mean, our whole community was there between La Salle and Colrain. I think it's very important that we get out to them with the truth about, you know, it not being down around the field, not weapons, not being our students. I just, I think that's important. We put something out immediately after the Water Fountain Incident, I don't know why we don't put something out about this right away as well. I mean, this is, these are our taxpayers, our levy supporters, and I think it's important that they, in all transparency, that we share with them the facts of what happened.
Which we can take the comments from tonight and create a statement. It's not a secret, that's why I shared it tonight.
You know, but Darryl, tonight, you didn't even mention Colrain. You know, it's the incident, we'll create strategies to deal with this. You know, I was out of town and I heard about it and.
We put something out immediately after the water fountain incident, I don't know why we don't put something out about this right away as well. I mean, this is, these are our taxpayers, our levy supporters, and I think it's important that they, in all transparency, that we share with them the facts of what happened.
Which we can take the comments from tonight and create a statement. It's not a secret, that's why I shared it tonight.
You know, but Daryl, tonight, you didn't even mention Colrain. You know, it's the incident, create strategies to deal with this. You know, I was out of town, and I heard about it. And, you know, you just can't bury things and hide them and flood them under the rug. I mean, you know, I have La Salle friends, who also gave me a hard time about the outcome of the game, commenting to me about, you know, the team having to stay in the locker room for an hour after the game. Not a good reflection on the Northwest community, especially then to come to a board meeting and then kind of circumvent what really happened. That's just my opinion.
On the other hand, you can't blame that on our kids in our school district.
There were some of our kids involved.
I got, I got that, but none of our kids were arrested, it was all kids from other school districts.
Mark, how many kids were involved in the fight?
Is that not correct?
I think there were eight.
But how many kids were in this group?
It was a very, very large group of kids.
How many would you say?
30 to 50.
Okay. So I don't know, but I'm just saying that there probably were, and they just didn't happen to get arrested. This was a district event between the two district high schools in Green Township, Southern Corrin Township, and it just needs to not be swept under the rug. That's my opinion. That's just my opinion.
Chris, my comments were not meant to sweep it under the rug, but to make sure that the expectation that I was laying out there was not just associated with Corrin High School, but as a district, no matter where you are on any of our campuses, the expectation that we have. So it was not meant to sweep anything under the rug, but to be very clear that the expectation is not just at a Corrin High School football game. I don't care if you're at Struble, Northwest High School, or anywhere in between, that the expectations are the same.
Well, I think let's just show force, and young people need to be aware of consequences. And I, you know, last year, we had one game from one school north of here moved here because of gunshot issues at their stadium. I mean, we live in some dangerous times, and that particular school is going to be playing here in a few weeks. That concerns me. They moved it away from their stadium last year because of gun issues, and now they're coming here. And I was there at that game last year, and afterwards, it wasn't nearly like this, Mark, but it was head in there, because I was there, I was in the middle of it. So anyway, that's my opinion.
I just think a statement would help...
I agree.
...alleviate some of the rumors that have been going around, maybe. A lot of those people aren't watching the meetings, so...
Not that I want to completely react to social media all the time, but...
Right.
I don't want our school district to take a black eye when they don't need to take a black eye. I mean, I don't know if we could have done anything any better that evening, and I just don't want that to get overshadowed with, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, kids weren't from our district. I was sitting there talking to one of the police officers, and we saw kids in other school districts clothing, and the police officer looked at me and goes, this is never good. And so he actually radioed ahead and said, I want you guys to stay close to Colrain High School in case we need something. And they did. I mean, I don't know how much more preactive, proactive we can be about stuff like that. So when you guys are doing your debrief, your root cause analysis, or whatever you want to call it, we need to talk about, are we letting known other school districts in? Especially if, to me, it seemed like there was something planned, because as soon as that happened, then the crowd ran out and the fight broke out, out of the parking lot. And then the surge came back in, so I don't know. That's probably enough, I won't keep eating it.
Yeah, and in terms of the narrative, we had some students from our AP camp tonight. I would much rather we talked about and have our narrative or our district be around the kinds of things our students are doing and creating that are positive versus things like this. I know we have to address it because it's in the public eye, but the amount of work that our kids and our staff are doing that are creating positive outcomes is the true story that our district and our community deserve to hear.
Okay, anything else?
In terms of COVID, one other question. Are any of our schools being proactive or still separating kids or anything, or are we past that, so far?
There are still, obviously, spacing, but it's kind of back to school is normal. They still kind of monitor that they're not measuring six feet, they're not doing the contact tracing. They're still being smart about things, but they're engaging in the normal school activities that you would expect to see.
So recess?
Recession, lunch, it's all in the cafeteria.
Okay.
There's still some schools that are doing breakfast in the classroom, but that's more of a logistic issue.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. So that brings us, it's coming up on that time of the year again, where we have the Capitol Conference, and it's this time of the year, we need to appoint a delegate and an alternate for the annual business meeting in Columbus. That will occur on November 14th. Since Matt's not here, I say we just assign it to him, since he can't say no.
He's going to be the delegate. I'll be the alternate if he wants to be the delegate.
The volunteer, we'll volunteer him.
Matt? You the alternate?
Jim's the alternate?
Yeah, I'll do the alternate.
All right. And does anybody want to be the delegate?
Matt.
Matt, okay. He did a good job last year.
He did.
Are we allowed to appoint him?
I think Matt would be fine with doing it again. He did a very nice job last year with it.
Yes. All right. So we need a motion in a second for that, please.
So moved.
Second.
Anything else Matt needs to do?
That's what happens when you don't show up at a board meeting.
I'm glad you guys didn't do anything when I was on occasion. That passes four to zero. Four to zero, Matt. All right, that brings us to board comments. Chris?
I think I've said enough today.
Make sure that's in the minutes.
I don't have any comments.
No?
I always do. Yeah. I'd like to thank Judy and Kayla and their students for coming. I know it's probably hard for them to go to school during the summer, but I just love seeing the presentations that they come up with. And also remind everyone that this Thursday, Community Partners for Education is hosting an event, Strickers Grove for All Families, from 6:00 to 9:30, so hopefully everyone can come out to that. And then thank all of our new bus drivers. I know we have a new face on our bus route. And also Erin and Matt and all of our administrators for kicking off the school year and just being there for our students, so thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank the kids for coming this evening and doing their presentation. I was, when I was watching it, I thought it would be kind of cool to do the James Corgan, like the karaoke, car karaoke, that would have been a nice one to see, too. I've only heard really positive things, other than poor Erin had a water main break on Friday. It's either that or a bad grid, power grid, or network issues. So I'm sure the kids weren't too upset about getting Friday off, so. But I've really heard very positive things so far at the beginning of the year. So I want to thank all our staff and educators who are back in the saddle. It was kind of cool, not kind of cool, it was really cool seeing all of our staff in the stadium two Fridays ago. I believe that's the first time that's ever happened?
We've done it before, it's just been a long time since we've done it.
It's, it's, seeing everybody in one area, you have a different appreciation. We see a lot of names come over, paperwork, and a lot, unless you, we all know people, but you don't see everybody until, that was really...
It's impressive.
It was very motivating, very, very motivating. And they're very school spirited, too. So that was awesome. Just remember, the, I think the walk-in HR is a great idea. I believe the first one, we had a pretty, was it, did I hear 27 hires from that one?
27 people who showed up.
27 people who showed up.
Mm-hmm. Not everyone was hired.
Okay, that's outstanding, thank you for that. And just, again, I want to thank Erin and your team for being selfless in how you handle the events, and I don't want to keep giving it any energy, I just, we appreciate you more than you know. So that's all I have. And we'll adjourn the meeting. Motion in a second, please.
So moved.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. Have a great rest of the week.